Swamiji, धन्यवाद आपका बहुत अच्छी प्रिंटेडक्शन। मुझे सबसे अच्छा लेकर आया है। मैं आपको भी स्वमीजी कहता हूँ। फिर से धन्यवाद कि आपका अच्छा आवाज़। मुझे तमाम तरीके से बढ़िया हैं, तो मैं इंग्लिश में बात करूँगा, उम्मीद है। अभी आपका एक ऑब्जेक्टिव है, तो आप इस रूम में जाओ, तो आपका एक दो-लिटरल शब्द होना चाहिए, जो आपका विचार करने के लिए दर्शन करेगा। इसका नाम आई ए आई है। मुझे नहीं बताया, मुझे यहाँ रहा हूँ, मुझे यहाँ रहा हूँ, मुझे यहाँ रहा हूँ, मुझे यहाँ रहा हूँ। मुझे यहाँ रहा हूँ, मुझे यहाँ रहा हूँ। दिमागी सबसे अधिक बातें, जो हर दिन के लिए हैं, गवर्नमेंट में, बिजनेस में, कॉलेजों में, असरों में, असरों में, इस दो-लिटरल शब्द के नाम से आई ए आई है। आई ए आई बिल्कुल सब को स्वीप कर रही है, हम जो किए हैं, और इसके बारे में बहुत सारे हम भी नहीं पूछे हैं। आई बेसिकली कर रहा है, इसका बात है, यह बिल्कुल स्वीप कर रहा है, हमने अभी तक इस तरीके से रहा है, और एक अधिकतम एरिया है, जहाँ इसका बहुत अत्यंत अनुभव है, इस एजुकेशन में है, और आपके लिए क्या करते हैं।
It was gonna happen. Then I asked a question of AI saying, how is AI going to disrupt science undergrad studies? And then the last question I asked is, how is AI going to transform banking? Just, just three simple questions. But I thought the, how AI approached the answers are interesting because it talks about what the problems and the challenges are for you and then goes on to talk about what are the opportunities for you? What do you need to survive in this AI world? So hopefully this will work. So what, what is going on here basically? What is AI effectively making happen? The first one is, it is, a lot of jobs are getting displaced. There is a tremendous transformation. Repetitive tasks won't exist anymore. By repetitive task, what I mean is, I mean, just take an example. In, in, in commerce, in accounting, you are taught about, you know, thank you. Very good, excellent. You, 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 you are taught about how to do P and L and how to do balance sheets and cash flow statements and so on. Cash flow statements and so on and so forth. All that you don't need to do anymore. Once the data is input into the system, the system generates everything. So all those automated tasks are gone. If you remember in the good old days, banks used to have tellers. Only tellers would dispense cash. Now, how many of you go to a teller for cash as opposed to ATM machines? Put, show me a hand, a raise of hands. How many of you use ATMs only? So rest of you don't, what do you do, rest of you? You go to tellers? How many of you go to bank tellers? Well, that's a good question. How many of you just don't do cash transactions at all? Everything is on your phone? Okay, that's the answer. What, but here's an example. Here is an example of a kind of transformation which made the teller irrelevant in any case. First it was ATM machines, then it was automated payment systems. I think one person in the whole hall said they used a teller. That's, that's a sign of things to come. AI is going to make that even more profound. If you, for example, all these call centers, you remember the call centers where, you know, you had people calling from abroad, asking for questions and so on? All that is going to be done away now with what's called chatbots. Chatbot assistants are going to handle all of these routine tasks. So that's number one. Secondly, mid-level roles in many companies, mid-level management is going to get wiped out. You don't need that anymore. Because AI is going to do a sufficient level of analysis where senior management can directly use output from AI to make determinations. So big mid-level jobs are going to get cut out. What this means basically is that there are significant job losses ahead. I don't know how many of you saw or read this, but last week, Amazon's CEO came out and said, look, we need to do some open, honest conversation with people. A lot of jobs on Amazon will be gone. Microsoft has announced similarly a substantial amount of layoffs because they don't need the level of coders and programmers they have because AI is doing all of this itself. Now, we are in India, you're in South India, you're in Madras and there might be a certain amount of, how shall I say? A cocoon of comfort that nothing changes now. I, I think that will be a dangerous attitude to take on your part because I think the agent of change which is going to make all this come to India and to South India and to Madras very quickly are the companies and the employers. They are going to be in a ferocious competition globally and they will have to cut costs and they'll have to increase productivity. This, this is like, think of it like a tsunami. The tsunami is currently hitting markets like America and so on and so forth, but it's only a matter of time before it hits. It'll be very quickly in Europe and it'll very quickly be in countries like India and so on and so forth. So you know, the what skills you're preparing yourself for right now may not be very relevant by the time you finish even your third year. Sorry. Right. Now, if those were the challenges in terms of job losses and so on and so forth, what are the new roles which are going to emerge? And this is where the opportunities come in. So while AI can be very dangerous to routine, road kind of stuff you do, it's going to create need for a lot more of new kind of talent. And here are some of the areas listed. Now, very honestly, some of these you may not even understand now. But in that lies the opportunity because between now and when you graduate, you got to figure out which, these are only some. There are many such categories of requirements, analytics, specialist skills, which are going to become necessary. But AI, machine learning engineers, there's going to be a lot of demand because these AI models are constantly developing and you need to update them. Data scientists and analysts, I know Swamiji is doing some very interesting work in the college in terms of certification courses in areas like data scientists and that. Again, what, what this means in a very simple fact, uh, point of view is, take my example of balance sheets and so on and so forth. Namavantin, be calm lah, we learn how to do balance sheets. What this data science and analysis can do is to look at seven thousand or seventy-five thousand different balance sheets within companies, within each industry and start, and start a process by which you can talk about what are best practices. I mean, I know there are non-commerce students, so forgive me. I'm talking mainly to the commerce students here. Ninga, when the balance sheet you come up with the receivables, accounts receivable, inventory, the number port, you know, so long as the balance totals, life goes on. That is not the level of analytics we're talking about. The level of analytics now we're talking about is, does it make sense for this company to have that level of inventory or receivables? How does this company's working capital, which basically comprises of these variables and the payables, how does that compare with other industries, companies in the same industry? What are best practices? What can we recommend to management as to what you should do about items which appear on the balance sheet? That is the kind of learning and thinking you need to get into right now. Unfortunately, our curriculum, because it is prescribed by the university etcetera, does not allow you that level of thinking. Right? Our curriculum is still focused on, you have to, assets equals liabilities, as Ondurtana, you're done for the day. What I'm pleading with you now is, that's not enough. You'll have to go to the next level now and start asking, so what? I've got this balance sheet, what does it mean? How am I going to go to senior management with this balance sheet and tell them there are fifteen different issues you need to address for survival of the business? The other issue of course with AI is, look, AI is machine-based and ethics can always become an issue. So there will be consultants who are going to start focusing on the ethics of AI. You know, you know, for example, even things like images and AI creating images and you know, fake images and fake news, all this stuff. So that's, that's, that's one area of competency which a bunch of people focus on. Product managers, you know, within companies, AI product managers are going to be very important because, look, this is, this, this is such a revolution happening at great speed that we, the only good news I have for you in all of this is, you're not alone. In every college, in every university, in every campus, even in the US, this is the same discussion. The discussion is so simple. I was just telling Swamiji in a previous meeting that five years ago, ten years ago, twenty-five years ago, if you'd asked me a question, suppose you're a parent and you come to me and say, I have a sixteen-year-old kid getting out of high school, wanting to go to college. What should he or she study? It was an easy answer to give in those days. You could say, you know, become a doctor, become an accountant, become a lawyer, become a, you know, specialize in medicine, blah, blah, blah. Today, I'll be very honest with you. I don't know what the honest answer is to give that, that parent. I don't know because the whole world, the, the environment is changing so fast. And if it's changing so fast and I'm not able to answer a sixteen-year-old kid's father that question, it's even more pressing problem for you guys. For you to survive in what is coming now, the level of upskilling you need to do is dramatic. Simple thing, even English, the level of knowledge of English you need to manipulate this AI world because this AI world is all about queries, about questions. And depending on how intelligent your questions are and how well you ask them, you get very different replies. So as an aside, at a minimum, I don't know how many of you are playing around with, with AI models. Let me tell you, it has got so serious that in New York, for example, people are even speculating that Google search may die because nobody does search anymore. People go straight to AI models for the answers they want to queries. So I told you, when you leave this room, I want you to remember two words called, two letters called AI. I also now suggest to you that what you should be very comfortable doing soon is to play around with AI. I mean, if you go to Google and type in Gemini, there are different levels of subscription services, but there's a free Gemini service. Go and play around with, with Gemini. Ask questions. Ask a question like, you know, I asked and it threw a slew of different answers saying, I am a commerce student, I am studying accounting. What are the challenges AI is going to create for me? And it'll tell you that if you want to look at routine jobs etcetera, etcetera, it's not going to be blah, blah, blah. And then it'll tell you that if you really want to get smart, you have to upscale yourself. So that's, it's, it's a, it's a brutal message, but I want to give it to you because I'm, I was like one of you fifty years ago, you know, in a hall like this. World was different. Today, the world is very much more challenging. In addition to the kind of opportunities you saw, there, there are also a whole slew of opportunities which are going to come because of this development of AI. For example, what cannot be taken away by AI are things like customer experience. You know, at the end of the day, in many goods and services in transactions, there is going to be an interaction between the seller and the buyer. AI is not going to take that away. So customer experience strategies, particularly for example, even in banking, right? Every, every transaction is not going to be just routine and road. There will be somebody with a particular problem related to a loan or a, or a deposit or, or a trade finance transaction etcetera. So there will be opportunities to study customer experience-related discipline. But that again, quite frankly, the challenge for us, it's not part of your curriculum. Something you have to go out of your way to learn. So for example, if I put up a word like customer experience strategies, if you're smart at the end of this class and when you get some time, go into Gemini and saying, what are some of the customer experience strategies which I can develop? That is, if you're interested. I mean, that, that's, that's, that's the beauty about AI. It's like an ocean of information and knowledge. Right now, the ocean of information is about publicly available information across different domains. What companies are going to do over a period of time is that they're going to ask AI to work on their own information, on their own data. Because that is how companies start to understand stuff going on in their own organization, which AI can then pattern recognize. This is an important two, word, couple of words I want you to remember. A lot of AI, you know, you'll use, you'll hear words like reasoning, inference etcetera, etcetera. But a lot of AI is also based simply on pattern recognition. Pattern recognition is an age-old concept, it's not new. I mean, if you, if you, if you look at what people say about great doctors, there's a famous saying, a good doctor treats the disease, a great doctor treats the patient. And one of, one of the feature of great doctors is that they have seen so many cases, they've got fantastic pattern recognition. Pattern recognition is critical. That's what AI does and can do brilliantly. Simply because this tremendous amount of computing power with the state-of-the-art new chips and the combination now is the ability to analyze and, and forecast things which were not possible. I mean, every day this is developing. Today, the AI models are probably a lot smarter than they were yesterday. So try to get into the middle of that stream as quickly as you can. Couple of other things which are obvious, I mean, there will always be a role for critical thinkers, for problem solvers. Because like I said, at the end of the day, AI at some stage stops. There is that additional little edge which the human brain has and that will be in, in areas like, you know, critical thinking, solving particular problems and so on. Communication and collaboration specialists, it'll always be around as a skill. And, and innovation and entrepreneurship, that of course is the ultimate, right? Because then the ultimate way to beat AI is not to depend on any organization or company to provide you an opportunity. It's where you decide that you're going to use your own skill base to become an entrepreneur and do things on your own. So the, the risk is that all of us in this room, we, all of us are not going to become successful entrepreneurs. It requires a particular set of skills, it requires, you know, a certain mindset and so on and so forth. So for many of you in this room, the opportunities provided by employment in organizations is still your main focus. For you to be employable in the next few years, how comfortable and articulate you are with AI, I think becomes very, very important. Just to show you how dynamic this whole situation is, in one such session, I don't know whether it was three months ago or a year ago, I was beseeching people saying, how many of you know Microsoft Excel? I'm, I'm glad many of you have raised your hands. This was a question I asked a year ago. And I was telling people, if you don't, you better get totally acclimatized. Well, guess what? I'm, I'm glad you know Microsoft Excel, but it's not very useful anymore. Because AI, don't get me wrong, Microsoft Excel will always be useful because even in your input of data into AI, you're going to need Excel and so on, so don't get me wrong. But what I'm saying is, right now, your challenge is one level higher. You have to now learn to start manipulating AI models and so on and so forth. And one good advice I would give you, the most fabulous learning tool in the world continues to be YouTube. I know you probably prefer to see YouTube for the latest Rashmika dance or, you know, Alu Rajan's move, whatever it is, right? I strongly recommend that somewhere in the middle of all that stuff, you also look at some of the tutorials available on AI. The beauty about AI is you can go and ask AI, how do I learn more about you? It's, like I said, it is like the guru. It might be the enemy which is going to make life very difficult for you in terms of jobs, but it's also the guru which is going to teach you, hey, focus on some of these skills and you'll, you'll be able to, you'll, you'll. So please go into YouTube and read about AI, read about inference, read about AGI, which is the next level of advanced general intelligence which is coming. Ask very personal questions about your, what, you know, ask like, hey, I'm studying economics or I'm studying physics. What, how, how are you going to disrupt me? And don't say you, you say, how, how are you, AI, going to disrupt me? And, and then you say, what are the opportunities I should focus on? You might find it very, very interesting. And if five percent of you do it, my task, my objective for this lecture is accomplished. I just did one additional thing about, you know, what, what does, what does AI do to science grads? Because I know there are some non-commerce people here. And interestingly, it's the same thing, you know, you, you got to bridge the skills gap. You, you have to, the continuous learning, that's important for everything, especially in science. I mean, one area, for example, where this is very relevant now is medicine. I mean, the, the kind of advances happening in medicine thanks to AI is just spectacular. And it, you know, there are many different areas in which AI is impacting medicine, but I'll, I'll highlight two. One is in the whole area of patient diagnosis, especially when it comes to complicated situations like cancer and so on and so forth. AI is just doing absolute magic. And then the other completely different area where AI is doing magic is drug discovery. The ability to analyze, you know, cells and proteins in the, in the, in the system and come up with different permutations to come up with drugs and so on and so forth. So there's continuous learning in terms of what is going on in that front. Government and institutional support is going to be important. I'm not sure, you know, that, I, I think at the prime minister level, there is a lot of interest in AI. But the level to which it has kind of percolated down the system into state governments and so on and so forth, I'm not sure. But one thing I'm very sure is that the companies, because it will become survival for them, companies are going to be the main driver of embracing AI and making it part and parcel of, of day-to-day life. And, and like I said again, for companies, the attraction of AI is two things. One, dramatic cost reduction because they can really reduce costs significantly, especially when it comes to headcount reduction. And the second area by definition is productivity. Because productivity basically means they're going to get the same or a higher output for their company with a lot less inputs or costs. That's what improves their profit margin. I'll finish by, I, I, I think I have one more. Okay. There are, there are, you know, this is not, this is not going to be easy. This has got a lot of complexity. And I'll give you one small example using the US itself as a situation. If AI, the way it is developing and the speed at which it's developing and listening to people like Amazon's Jassy and Microsoft's Nadella, if it is going to result in significant layoffs, we have a societal problem. Because in America, you have something called social security. But social security is based on existing employees contributing to a fund which pays retired people. And as you know, as the population ages, the number of retired people increases dramatically, the number of people working in the workforce comes down. And so a big imbalance starts to happen. If on top of that, you have AI-related unemployment, then you're going to have a serious societal problem. So what are people thinking about? And you'll, you'll hear this concept, it's called UBI, universal basic income. The idea is that if companies are laying off people and in the process, their cost base is going down and their profits go up, these companies will effectively have to contribute to something like a social security system which in turn guarantees every citizen a certain amount of a basic income. That income, for example, America is being talked at two thousand five hundred dollars a month. Now, is it going to be easy? No, companies are not going to like the concept that they have to pay more tax. But somebody has to take care of the problem that you're laying off so many people. And don't forget one thing, it's not, it's not milk and honey for the companies either. Because if you lay off a lot of people, these are the very people who are consumers. These are the people who buy stuff, buy goods, buy services. And if, if there is a general decline in the activity of buying of goods and services, the economy is going to take a slowdown and these companies will also have a problem. So there, there are, there are huge, huge societal issues here. The only problem is that the speed at which the machines are learning and, and AI is developing, it's, it's virtually not stoppable. No government is going to put a ban because of a fear that if they put a ban, somebody else will go ahead. And a classic, for example, that is in the AI race between America and China. America, given what I'm saying to you about the problems, may well be tempted to say maybe we should slow down AI development. But then immediately, they have to realize that China has no such constraints because it's a different kind of a political regime. In an autocratic regime, you can do what you want. And if, if President Xi decides that AI development is number one focus, America cannot be left behind. So there is no stopping this, this race. America is trying different things like not allowing access to, for China to buy advanced chips and so on and so forth. But that's, all that is a short-term issue. Eventually, the Chinese will figure it out and, you know. So I'll finish by just saying this to you. This is not meant to frighten you. This is meant more to alert you to a tsunami, a typhoon, which is coming your way. If you're forewarned, you're forearmed. If you believe what I've said so far, then it's, the onus is on you because Swamiji, as a very smart educator, is going to try his best. But institutionally, the college will have its own constraints because we are stuck around the curriculum which we cannot do anything about. So Swamiji told me, for example, he's trying to put the curriculum itself into AI and make, make it possible for you to use AI to interact with the curriculum. That's a big step forward, which is a positive. But your preparedness for what is coming is going to come entirely from your own efforts. So if you're in the second year, you still have a year to go, you, you may want to start dedicating some portion of your time to understand more. By the way, I'll also be honest with you. I stand here and talk about AI, so I know everything about AI. What I know AI, I can, will not fit the back of my thumbnail. Because like you, I'm, 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 I'm not an engineer, I'm not a computer scientist, I'm, I'm a commerce guy. But I can, I, I want to communicate to you the fear I have at the age of seventy about AI. Theoretically, you should be saying, by guy should retire. I'm, I'm driven, I'm absolutely motivated by the fact that this is a new challenge in life, admittedly coming late. But I want to convey to you that, Ninga, you must embrace this as a huge, a challenge and an opportunity. The opportunity is for you to try to understand what AI is going to do and then figure out what are the skills you need to be able to adapt to that environment. So I'll finish by saying that, you know, it's, it's a very interesting opportunity. During my life at various points in time, there has always been a interesting question posed saying, okay, today, God comes in front of you and God offers you a choice. He says, look, so he looks at me and says, you're seventy. I'll give you a choice to either go back to Don Bosco School where you studied, to start your life all over again, or I'll give you a chance to go back to Citibank when you were running Citibank in Malaysia when you were thirty-five years old, or you can be who you are today. It's very interesting. At different points in time in my life, I've answered that question differently. Today, I tell you, I'm very happy to be a seventy-year-old guy because what is, what is coming here is, is scary. But if I'm not going to be a seventy-year-old guy, I'd rather be a guy in Don Bosco or your age because you are at that age where your, Swamiji used the word adaptable. You're adaptable, your mind is adaptable, you're young. Your mind is like a computer print board on which you can put a lot of different chips. But, and the initiative, has to come from you. It's not going, it's honestly, it's not going to come from the curriculum you're focused on. It's not going to come from anywhere other than your incremental effort. So remember, AI is coming. You can't fight it. You can pretend that, oh, India, no, no, dinner tandi, you know, a different culture, we are fine. It's going to come. And it, it'll come much faster than you think. That's number one. Because the agents who are going to make it happen are people whose lives, whose business models are all going to get challenged by AI. Personalize AI in your lives, interact a lot with AI models. Try to understand, ask questions, ask intelligent questions. See whether it gives you a spectrum of answers which widens your mind.